I'm on Planning and Zoning Committee. And I wondered why you took that out that they had to ask the neighbors? I mean, the four of us.
It was private viable council number two, get it removed.
And so you all voted to remove it?
I did not.
I voted to remove that mail because I'd been approached by some of my constituents that didn't agree with that.
I've been approached part of it too, that they were upset that that was taken out. And I, I know there was two petitions that were floating around. Did they ever come to the county?
There was one petition with 14 signatures.
There was another one, and it got lost someplace because I saw it. And I think Linda saw it, and it was.
I saw the one that Linda explained.
The entire page was filled with people against this chicken. And I just, I am not for it. I don't think that it's going to improve the image of Newcastle whatsoever. When I first came to Newcastle, when '68, I was very unimpressed. But it has improved so much over the years. And the city is continually trying to improve it. And I do not think having chickens in your backyard. And if you don't get approval from your neighbors, and all of a sudden you put this in your backyard, you think there's not going to be conflict there? And I know there's been some other letters sent against this that I had not heard. I wasn't here last time, so I don't know. But I had not heard that they'd been read. And I do not think the majority of Newcastle is for this.
Thank you, ma'am. So I'd like to address.
Maybe just say one thing.
Yes.
I've read every letter that has been received.
They know that there are people that are against this.
Yes.
There's a, this process has been going on for probably half a year now, ma'am. There's been some letters in the negative. There's been some positive. There've been, I have taken grab samples of population. And most people don't care if people get chickens. Some do care, and then some are for it and really want this to happen. We had a public meeting, and the overwhelming majority of the people at the meeting were in favor. So I would like to respond to Mr. James as well. You use that one all the time about it being the very vocal minority, and the silent majority doesn't want chickens. But I found it in taking samples from the population, walking around town. We had a poll in the newsletter journal. There are lots of people that want this to happen. And it's the not-so-vocal minority and the vocal majority that is the reason that we're moving forward with this. And then one more point, too, is, you know, I don't feel that I should have to accuse myself from a vote because this isn't necessarily personal for me. I don't even know that I will get chickens when this passes. I probably will not. I have a bird dog in my backyard. It's not going to work. I have chickens out at my folks' place out of town in the county. This is something that a lot of people have asked for. So this is something that I, I got elected to be on the council, and this was one of my campaign promises. So I feel that I'm serving my constituents by moving forward with this. And I believe that a good chunk of the population in Newcastle either doesn't care or they want chickens. And the minority is the people that do not want them. Then I also feel like there's people that want the, I don't want, or you need permission to get chickens, that want it to pass because they have their own personal interests in mind. They don't care if the family next door is going to get fresh eggs, be able to teach their kids animal husbandry. They don't care about that. They just don't want chickens. And it's, and it's a very polarizing issue. People have gotten really ugly about it. I don't believe that it should be. I think that people should be able to have chickens in their backyard and collect the eggs and not have to worry about all the naysayers. So that's my position. And I don't understand this untimely revision of the ordinance by the CSO. It was on the agenda that we were going to look at this to pass it on first reading at the last council meeting. And then she comes in with edits and revisions on the second reading. So I don't really understand why she wasn't more involved in the process during the whole course of the six months while we were putting this together. And then all of a sudden, reading number two, we have a whole pile of notes here, and some of it's just wishful thinking and stuff that doesn't really seem all that relevant.
That's part of the purpose of multiple readings.
And see, this is all stuff since I've only been, I've been on the council two years, right? And most of our ordinances pass unanimously. We normally get along, and we pass all these ordinances unanimously. And there's no, like, question as to it moving through the process. But now all of a sudden, we're getting the itch in our giddy up. So anyway, I guess I'm learning something new on the council after two years.
Anybody else?
Yeah, hi, Leslie Patterson is my name. I came here tonight, I don't plan on getting chickens, but I do, I think this is a bit of a government's overreach issue, I think. I appreciate that the language for neighbor's permission was stricken because I do think that will cause more conflict than it will avert. And I agree with what Maddie Peterson wrote in, is one of the, like, where does it end? You know, I'm, I would like to assume that most of us that live in city limits want to get along with our neighbors, and we want to have good relationships with them, and we do for the most part. And, you know, my neighbor doesn't ask me for permission to put up a dog run. My neighbor doesn't ask me for permission to park his motorhome outside. My neighbor doesn't ask me for permission to plant a tree. And so that's, I appreciate that that language was struck, and I do have a couple other comments. The one that Justin brought up about the frequency of cleaning the coop, I think more clear but more vague language would make that a lot more enforceable, to say something like, "The coop and surrounding area will be kept in clean and sanitary condition." As we all know, when we start getting into the nitty-gritty of things, those laws and rules in our personal and professional lives become a lot harder to enforce. And to say that, you know, again, who will enforce the two weeks? So I think making it clear but a little bit more vague because maybe, maybe clean and sanitary requires more frequent than two weeks? And maybe, maybe not, I don't know. But that's just, that's just something I noticed in reading this current ordinance. So, and I would, I would like to support Ty in his comments, too.
I just want to say, when it was said that the persona of Newcastle might go down, I don't feel that. We've got many, many big cities. Sheridan, I mean, I'm not saying that they're big, but they have this. And I've never heard, I have family that lives in Sheridan, they've never had any kind of a problem, ever. So, you know, this is where I keep going with this. I think we're making it unthoughtful. Our neighbors, just because we're passing an ordinance that you can have chickens does not mean everybody out there is going to go get a chicken. It just isn't. No, no, I don't, I'm not going to get them. But if my neighbor did it, I don't think I'd have them, I really don't think.
It depends.
I don't, I really don't. And it does, I mean, every situation is going to be different. What I would like to see happen is, let's give this a try. Let's give it a try for a while, and if it just fails big time, then let's change the ordinance again. And I know, Mr. James, once things are in, you can't change. But I think if we give it a try, then we can, if it just is terrible and everybody's fighting, then we can change. I, we've already made a list of people that will take chickens. If this does not work, they're on the list that they will take the chickens.
I have a question. How does that legally work to take away one's pet? I mean, how are you going to take away an eight-year-old's chicken? You know, a little eight-year-old girl gets a chicken, we decide it's not working. How do you take that away from them? Have we thought about these, these issues?
So you mean as in having the city come and take the chickens if your licenses revoked?
If we decide to try it, and then we decide, okay, chickens in city limits is not working, we have to do away with them? How would you go about that?
Well, you would repeal for one, you repeal the ordinance, and then we would basically tell everyone that they need to take them to the people who said they would take them on the list. It's not as though there would be an officer coming to someone's house and taking said chickens out of the backyard.
It's like butchering the sheep at fair time.
So would you do that to other pets?
Yeah, the kids.
I mean, I'm just, I'm curious on the legality of passing it and then deciding it doesn't work and going back on it. I'm just.
You're talking about if a kid gets attached to the, to the pet, then how do you think?
I'm very attached to my dogs.
How do you think the chicken would be able to get rid of it? I don't understand that.
Right. I'm just, I'm curious. I mean, how does it legally work?
I guess I'm confused as to, are you saying that if the eight-year-old just says, "I'm going to keep the chicken," or?
I'm just saying it'd be really sad to tell a family that can get chickens, "We decide it's not working, we have to remove all the chickens. This girl really likes her chicken."
Fair enough.
I mean, I just don't know how it works. So it might not be as easy as try it, take away.
Yeah, I'm not really one of those that relishes the idea of my neighbors having chickens. Having said that, when we lived in Texas, both sides had chickens. One of them had about 40 chickens, and they'd get in our yard. We got along with that neighbor. The chicken got in the yard, you went over there. If you didn't want it there, if you didn't care, you leave it alone. I mean, that's how people, I think, generally are. I don't plan on getting chickens. I think my wife is all for it because she doesn't like $4.50 a dozen eggs. But I'm not the one that's going to be building a coop that they can survive in the winter. It's just not going to happen. But I like the idea that it's, that, you know, it's okay to pass the chickens. And I appreciate that you took away this thing where they have to go and get the neighbor's permission, because that sounds more like red flag laws than almost anything I've ever heard of. And so I'm glad to see that stricken. So I'm kind of on both sides of it. Personally, I just want to see people free to do what they want to do as long as they're not being a nuisance to everybody else.
So my wife's cousin lives in Denver, Colorado, and they're allowed to have chickens. They can have some water fowl. I think they can even have goats in their backyard. And, I mean, this is a city of millions. And, you know, I guess the neighbor gets a chicken in their yard every once in a while, they grab the chicken and throw it back over the fence. Like, I don't really see what the issue is. We, we put stuff in the ordinance about clipping their wings. I mean, we thought, I thought that we've put together a decent ordinance, you know, up until we get a bunch of.
Yeah, I don't like those, I don't like all that revision stuff. That's weird.
On the second, on the second reading of the ordinance, but.
Just to go along with what you said, Tyrell. I appreciate Tyrell, and I absolutely do not think he should be recusing himself. He's been listening to his constituents, and I appreciate that. Just because we don't agree with another person on the city council, that city council member should refuse themselves and not have a voice on the council.
Here, here.
I did not realize that those, Ms. Mayor, the comments that you read were from our officer, co-enforcement officer. I would like to say that is extremely unprofessional, her comments on this part.
It's scary, to be honest.
To have, for her to be saying, even in jest, that the people that get chickens shouldn't be able to complain about dogs and legitimate complaints in the city, in my mind, is just mind-boggling that she put that out for the public to read her comments on that. And I find that very unprofessional from our enforcement officer to be, be interacting with the public that way. So that's, that's the last thing I just want to say tonight on audit.
Like I said earlier, I've been reading everything that I've been receiving, so good or for it or against it.
Well, several things. I agree with Ty on that. If she, if she just came forward now and gave you those comments, which she should have been with us the whole way. But here's the other thing, all along, you've been talking about two different people handling this. One, the building inspector. So when did she find out she was going to be responsible for all of it? Is that why she's just not coming forward? The other thing is, when people have pets, County Fair is a perfect example, fat lambs, fat goats, chickens, rabbits, they all get sold at the auction. And believe me, I was raised on ranch and sold all those things in County Fair. You get attached to them all, which you know you could lose some when you do. So, you know, things like that. And the cleaning the coop was a suggestion. I know that some of that came from the Office of the University of Wyoming and from Natural Resources District. And both of those, their information have, which they're using basically the same information, came with suggestions with the square footed size and that. And that's where that came from, was cleaning it every two weeks for the health and the benefit of the chickens.
I do like what Leslie Patterson?
Yes.
I do like how she said to kind of rephrase that to sanitary, and can you say that again?
Just something that would describe like a well-cupped coop, that wouldn't involve a bunch of minute details, I guess. And in my opinion, that would make it more enforceable than having to say, well, you know, because I think when, when we have too specific, we need clear guidelines, but when they become too specific, people can get pulled into the weeds arguing over, "Did you clean this every two weeks? No, I, I still have one more day to clean my coop." So I think, just to say, you know, to be reasonable, to have chickens in city limits, please keep your chickens clean, you know? And maybe that's as defined by, but I guess I'm thinking of, you know, I'm thinking of the other animals that we have. And I don't recall having to comply with certain amounts of, like, dog poop in my yard or not. So I just, I, I foresee that with, with really, really specific language, it might run into problems.
So I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion to.
I move that we commence with the second reading of ordinance number six, series 2022. Second.
We have a motion, a second, further discussion.
I just, I urge the council members to think about everything that was said tonight. There were some really good points brought up. Should we be doing a second reading when there's still so much discussion? Is that doing our due diligence? Or are we, I know it's been drug out for a long time. And I'm really confused as to why, personally.
So.
I'll just leave it there. Should we be doing our second reading when there's still so much discussion?
We worked pretty hard on the ordinance as it stands. We worked on it enough where we've been to multiple planning and zoning. We've had multiple meetings. We've been talking about this for, you know, six months, whatever. I don't, I don't know when it started. I think the public meeting was in May. So, anyway, because this is a point of contention, people are going to keep fighting for both sides until nothing gets done. And we might be talking about this next November if it continues to go on the way that it is. So, I mean, I feel like I'm serving my constituents by, by moving forward with the second reading. Not all of them, of course, because some of you guys don't want this to happen. But there's a lot of people that do. So.
You know, I respect on both sides of this, but also I'm serving my constituents that say no to me. So the other ones that we are not listening to is we've got these others that are on this petition that we didn't see last meeting when it went to first reading. And we keep bringing other people that's into, another petition that was brought in, but we haven't seen it, but we know that it's out there. We've sent this to the Planning and Zoning Board, and I was at the meeting with the Planning and Zoning Board. We got their input, and then we get it back from them, and then we decided to change what the zoning board presented to us. And it's almost like we're kicking them in the teeth because now we're taking away that owner's responsibility of asking the neighbors, you know, permission. We're taking it away from them twice now, not giving them that option. So we're kicking them down again because we've given this opportunity for everyone to give their voice. And I've been into the portion of it to try to write this, to give it some, okay, if we're going to do this, let's do it the right way. But I think we're trying to push this so damn fast that we're not given that opportunity to figure out what is the right way and what's wrong way.
When I was in this motion, I was actually asking for a motion about changing the wording for the frequency of cleaning, shall be once every two weeks.
Well, my motion stands. My motion stands, we might be talking about this a year from now because, and the thing is, is done, I, I don't know who you've talked to, but it's my impression that you don't want your neighbors to have chickens. And that's one of the reasons that you're pushing so hard to have that added.
My neighbors are the ones that come talk to me. I don't care if my neighbor has one, but what's going to happen is my dogs, my dalmatian gets out because the chickens over there. Who's going to pay then to pay for that chicken my dog killed?
Well, I think that it's just going to have to be called and washed, and keep your chickens in your yard and cooped up. So, I mean, if your dog's breaking into their yard, then that might be a problem.
So we had a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion passed second reading. Department head reports, police department. So for calls for service for the PD for the month of November as of today's date, 159, year-to-date, 3,116. Unity service officer had 59 calls as of today's date for the month of November, 857 for year-to-date. The city crew had two this month and year-to-date, 44. We do have our new chief, Chuck Charles, both starting December 5th. We do have several more reserve officers that are interested in the reserves, boards, and total staff. We do have four right now. We are down, Larry Frank did go to the Sheriff's Department and started today. The two full-time officers right now are fit and tired. And so hopefully, we can, with some of these reserved officers, there is one that wants to at night, and then the other during the day. So hopefully, we can get them more than just a day at a time, a couple at a time, so the officers can have. So they're, they're working on that with their agencies, but obviously, their agencies have to come forward. We did get out on Police One advertisement, and I think that's all of that information. I do want to announce that just last week, Leanne Cox, our IT person, was nominated for the IT of the year with AppCo. And this is the second year in a row that she got this award. So I'd like to congratulate her here at the council as well as I did in front of them. So, but yeah, I think that's pretty huge. If anybody doesn't know what AppCo is, it's a, it's all the agencies dispatch, they all get it together. It's a conference, there's sales reps there, there's new, the new updates of what's going on with technology. To get awarded, letters have to be submitted for team dispatcher of the year, IT, all of that. So it's not just us, it's every department, sheriff, and PDs in the state of Wyoming. So I think it's a huge honor that, you know, we have that person in our, in our, on our appointment for the city. So if you see her, give her congratulations. That's all I have for more. If anybody has any questions. Okay, moving then to city attorney, Ellen Hughes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the first thing that I needed to talk about, I have not received any response from the county regarding the 50 pair contract. I'm not expecting it this week, but probably next week at the earliest. And I'm hoping that it's next week. Obviously, that's a pressing issue. You guys obviously will all be notified at the moment that I do receive something. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is actually the Ackley House. And I believe Greg, and this is probably something we could also talk about in the supervisor that comes up for department head reports. I believe Mike had started that process, but he hadn't given proper notice under the circumstances for actually giving, basically giving an opportunity to vacate and then to repair, which I don't know if that house is even possibly ever going to be repaired. So I'm assuming demolition after a certain point. But the reason I bring that up is just basically because we'll have to go ahead with the notices to allow that. And I can talk to you about that process under the Uniform Code for the Abatement of Dangerous Buildings. I can give you that packet, and we can walk through that. That's all, Madam Mayor.
Because if you're to call, it's better to abate property rather than condemn a property. Because once you condemn it, you cannot do anything with it. You abate it, you can actually move forward with demolition, repair, whatever.
It gives the, the opportunity to, I mean, I don't think there's any possibility that they repair it, but, you know, it gives them the choice at least in doing, you know, going through the process. I reached out, that was one other thing. I reached out to who would be power of attorney, I believe it was Friday, and I have not received a. Um, I believe it was Friday, and I have not received a phone call back yet. So, um, I will keep everyone informed as of now. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions for City Attorney, please? Okay, City Clerk, Claudia Stacey, can I get that? Any questions for City Clerk? Um, Public Works Supervisor, Greg Stone?
Everybody has two reports. Are there any questions, first of all?
On lagoon cell B cleaning, we've already moved fourteen thousand one hundred and sixteen dry tons.
Correct.
So we're pushing up on the contract?
Yes.
Limit?
They have about one more day left. They figured to clean it. Um, looking at the map they produced, there's very little left.
So we're not concerned that we're going to bust the...
We are going to probably go over the limit. We're going to go over fifteen tons. Uh, we're not sure how much yet. We'll have to tell towards the end of the week. They, they'll meet the contract deadline on the twenty-fourth to have the lagoon biosolids removed out of the cell. Out of the contract, they'll have until this time next year to land a plate. So in the coming weeks, we will find out a better idea of how much over we are going to be. Right now, it's just too soon to tell. Uh, probably way next council meeting, we'll have an idea, a better idea of how many dry tons we went over the amount. Um, if, we're, we're going to go over it. They were estimating they probably have another thousand dry tons left to allow, which you put, should have buried it with the fifteen thousand, so...
Are they going to call it a wash or are they going to charge us for the hundred and sixteen?
Well, not sure yet. Not willing to comment on that one.
I'm not quite sure.
Uh, the two dark spots on the...
In the inlet?
That's what's there.
That's correct.
The one towards the top of the map would be close to the secondary inlet. Um, we're talking to them about leaving it completely because there could be a lot of clay soil mixed in with that due to the washing of the peninsula that was where the original inlet is. We have to replace that inlet anyway, so we will remove that soil and biosolids when we do that replacement. The other section is, is probably the more important piece. Uh, but that's right where we found a really bad wet spot. We're not even sure if we can get in there to get it out. Uh, they buried their loader. They actually had three pieces of equipment to pull it out. So, uh, we may not be able to get that spot cleaned anyway, for the majority of it, so...
Any other questions on...
You wanted to move forward with hiring Scott Thompson?
Yes, so I'd like to ask the council to, uh, hire Scott Thompson at sixteen fifty an hour, full-time. Uh, Frank Blunt, Director S came back fine, all of his references were, were good. Uh, he had a CBL. All he has to do is reapply and take the, write the test again, so there's going to be a DT treaty involved in that.
So we're saving forty-five hundred bucks or something like that?
Closer to seven thousand.
Okay. I move that we hire Scott Thompson full-time for sixteen dollars and fifty cents per hour.
Permission for a year.
Put one in here, will we approach?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
There was a, we spoke with Charles Bartlett today, Mayor I, and Stacey about possibly hiring him part-time as a, as an interim engineer to... He, he is an engineer, but probably more so to help with some of the grant process. Uh, paperwork side, reviewing project documents, plans, and so on and so forth.
Grants.
What's that?
And grants.
He isn't helping with the grant, grant management, that sort of stuff. What's that? Uh, I would like to move forward with hiring him part-time, limited thirty hours a week to help out with some of the duties that Mike was doing that I just really honestly don't have time to deal with, so...
Um, I, uh, this morning when we all met, I was very impressed, um, when I spoke with him, with his experience, um, not only as an engineer, but, um, home inspections, planning and zoning. Um, I think he'll be a really good help to, um, Adam McFarland as well, a good resource.
He has worked...
And he's from Newcastle, so that's been...
Ken Brereton here, he actually worked, I believe, for Saratoga as a public works director there. So he's, he's done his kind of work of outside of engineering. He's familiar with, with the processes that, that honestly I need help with, so... What, what are you doing, looking at? Forty dollars an hour.
So this is a, this is a Band-Aid. I was wondering if the council, like, has moved forward with, um, doing anything with the grant writer position or city administrator position?
Um, are you, are you administrator? Okay, um, so after speaking to a couple of people, um, I did not get a call back yet from, um, a gentleman out of the emergency area who is a city emergency management person. Um, and it looks like if I can get that information as well as administrator information from that area, we could probably get our own emergency manager slash coordinator. Um, so I'm kind of waiting for that information to come this way because I think that would be very good for the city to have an emergency management person slash coordinator. But I think I have a lot of information on the other two types that we're looking at. It's just we didn't fit together and I had to cancel the lesson. Um, but I'll get all that together and then I'll email further personnel committee to me.
So, I mean, this is another one of those situations like what you had with the chief, right? So Mike's been gone for a couple of months now, right? I mean, I don't remember his last day.
Nineteenth of August.
Nineteenth of August. So, I mean, I think that's an interesting idea with the emergency management thing, whatever. But I think most importantly, we would need somebody like a city administrator, which I had brought all of that information, um, to the council, um, right after Mike quit. Um, so I think time is of the essence. And this is something that, I mean, if you want me to be on the Personnel Committee, or Personnel Committee, I'd be more than happy to meet anytime. Um, but it's just something that we kind of need to get done.
I agree. I bet I wanted to do our due diligence as well, um...
Well, we did our due diligence by getting three different, um, job descriptions. I got you guys one from Kimber. I got you guys in touch with the guy from Gillette. Um, Violet Sanderson, uh, talked to me from Afton. I mean, we had a number of city administrators and there's a pool of city administrators in the state, um, that we could, we could talk to about this. And then like I said, I, uh, for the size of our community, um, we're an anomaly for having an engineer. That's weird for the rest of the state. But for our size, as far as the city administrator, um, we, we're about the size of what a town with a city administrator would have. So, I mean, I, I felt like I did my due diligence by, um, gathering, having Clerk Miller from Afton gather me a bunch of those job descriptions and then maybe, but, um, I think that it's something that we need to move forward with or, you know, try to do something with before any more time goes by.
Well, I agree.
But in the interim, I, this would be a big help to me.
Yeah, I understand, but I'd like, you, you got a lot on your plate.
And, and I'm willing to take it on, but there's some of the stuff that I just do not have the time to...
Is he willing to just do very part-time? I mean, knowing that at some point he might not have a job.
He has a part-time.
And I, I knew that. I had, I had already talked to his wife.
We have, we have three different contract documents we need to review right now. And honestly, I do not have the time to sit and read three hundred and fifty page books. So there's several other things I, I have on my plate as well, so... First, the check would, check would definitely be a, a good interim solution, a temporary.
Yeah, I, I agree with Tyrell. I just think we need to get going on this because...
Right.
The, the grants are, that's where we need help. And, and they're time-sensitive, so...
Yeah, we, we will be asking, we will be going to SLIF and SRF in January. Uh, there's two other projects we're looking at right now. One's the station of the Avenue Silver Line. The other one would be York Street Avenue, York Street Delaware Line and then Seventh Avenue. So we do have three projects we're wanting to move forward with. And it's, it's going to take somebody working on it, quite a bit to get it done, so...
I was just saying, it's, it's time, you know, it's time-sensitive.
I'd make a motion that we'd hire this Charles Bartlett, part-time at forty dollars an hour in the interim while we're trying to find a replacement for our administrator.
I second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for all of us? Okay, any standing committee reports? Any other business? Claims against the city dated November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two?
And Mayor, the motion to be, be the claim against the city. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I didn't do...
Oh, sorry.
Okay. It's so funny. I'm going to move that we adjourn this meeting.
Aye.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? And then the eight oh five.